I'd like to call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, under new business tonight, the first order of business will be the reorganization of the school committee. Are there any nominations for Chair?
Yes. I would like to nominate Martha Barthium for the position of Chairman, Chairperson.
Are there any other nominations?
Can I also nominate her?
Second.
I would like to second that.
You can't. You can't. On a roll call vote, Ms. Messia.
Aye.
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 The unanimous vote. Thank you very much. The next order of business-
Martha. Move the mic down.
The next order of business will be to accept nominations for the position of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
Yeah. Mrs. Barthium?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ethier for the position of the Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Ethier.
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Napton. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
I think we have to do a roll call vote for that.
By roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Congratulations. Okay, and the next order of business would be to appoint the Secretary. That would typically be the Superintendent of Schools who would be appointed as Secretary. Do I hear a nomination for that?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. I should say the Chair votes aye. All right. Okay. Okay, and, um, does she have to be appointed?
The committee votes to renew her as they're recording.
Okay, and the committee needs to renew the Recording Secretary. That would be for Melissa Farrow.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Okay, the next order of business would be to approve the 2016-2017 school calendar. You all should have the calendar in your packets. Hopefully you've had time to review it. Does anybody have any comments or concerns?
I have a question.
Okay.
I know it's difficult for a lot of parents with all the half-days. I'm just wondering why there's so many half-day for the professional development instead of like a full day?
Dr. Crowe?
The requirement is 180 days for the students. The teachers have two full-day professional development days. They have two full that are contractual. The other half-days are so that the NEASK has to happen at the high school, and these are standard practice. This is, and we actually only have, I believe, there are, it's sort of the minimum requirement to get things done that we need to do on those half-days.
Okay. So it still counts?
We would extend the, it counts as a full day of school for the students.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. In the district I work in, the Superintendent often seeks input from the Teachers' Union on the school calendar. Was the Teachers' Union consulted in any way?
No, they were not in this case, Ms. Messia.
Is there any reason why not?
No, contractually, it's very similar to last school year, so we stayed as closely as we could to that, knowing that there should not be concerns, but that's a good point that I could have done that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment about what you want to bring up about the full-day?
Yes, and there is, in reviewing it this afternoon, I did notice one thing. It's just a small correction that needs to be made. On April 14th, it is listed, it's Good Friday, and it is listed in the box in the right-hand corner, but on the calendar itself, it's not listed as a no-school day. So I think an adjustment has to be made there. I don't know how important it is that we approve this tonight. Do we think that we should address the Teachers' Union? Were there any concerns? Did you want to table it until the next meeting? We can put that correction in, and the Superintendent would have an opportunity to speak to the representatives of the Teachers' Union. What is the pleasure of the Board?
I guess my only question would be, what's the timeframe when, as to how soon we need to get the calendar established to the Superintendent? Sorry, question to the Superintendent.
Is it important as far as scheduling?
It's only because we'd like to notify as soon as we can, so people that are making plans can do so. The adjustment on the 14th would just put us into a new week in June, assuming that there are no snow days. So we could adjust that tonight if you want to modify it, you know, you want to amend it tonight.
I'd like to get some feedback from the Union just to-
And we will be talking about our meeting schedules, so maybe we could table this until the next meeting, which I don't think will be too far from now. Would anybody like to make a motion to table approval?
Mrs. Chairperson, I just have one more comment before we do that. Prior to the 15-16 calendar, the Friday before Labor Day, which is a PD day now, it used to be a day off. And, I mean, it affects me personally because it's a day I have to take off now because my kids are home and my wife's a teacher, but I know, I'm not the only, you know, I know there are quite a few teachers in the district that have students in the district, so that's something else I think we should, you know, at least look at. And I would make that motion to table this to the regular meeting for this, the May meeting when we decide the date of that.
Okay, there's a motion to table this matter until the next scheduled meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Wendy. I'll chat.
No, who made the second?
Wendy. Wendy? Okay.
Could I hear, could I have a motion on, I mean, could I have a vote on that, please? I don't think we need a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. And maybe before we bring it back, those will be the matters that we would look into. We would look into whether or not we can hold the teachers perhaps, and all staff members, ask them their feelings about the calendar, if they have any suggestions, and we will bring it back to the next meeting for a vote. Okay. The next order of business is the motion and the vote to approve the transfers for net school spending and E and D. Mr. Suter, did you care to speak on this?
Sure, so, for the benefit of the new members, we've got some, we were short on net school spending for fiscal year 15. So the shortfall was rolled into the fiscal year 16, the current year that we're in, requirements. So in meeting with the Fiscal Overseer and Desi, they're both requiring us to spend as much of the budget as we can down to the last dime. So, some of the transfers we've made before tonight had to do with buying the technology, fixing the roof, and doing things like that so that we can put the money to good use and not just spend it for the sake of spending. We did some transfers in April. We did about a million dollars in transfers to move money around. That was to buy the smart boards and fund some of the positions that we've created this year. But part of our funding was to do asbestos abatement at the high school, and we had some estimates at the time, and since then, since the April meeting, we've had an architect actually draw the plans, and we're putting, it's out to bid right now. The estimates that the architect came up with amounted to about $895,000. We had $200,000 put aside for that, so we're pretty far off as to what we can afford to do. So I met with the new Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. We scaled back the program, and the bottom line is, we can get it, we can get it down to about $370,000 to do what will amount to be the third floor of the B Building at the high school. They'll remove all the ceilings. They'll completely remove the ceilings, put in a brand-new drop ceiling, all-new, energy-efficient lighting fixtures, and we'll be taking out the skylights as well, and that'll be done after we replace the roof. So tonight, one of the first transfer I'd like to present and ask someone to make the motion is that we still have $117,279 left in our excess and deficiency account, and it looks like now we're going to need to appropriate that and put it towards the asbestos abatement project so we can get close to the $370,000 that we need to at least do the third floor of the B Building. So, if anybody would be interested in making that motion, I've prepared it here.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I move to increase the fiscal 2016 Regional School District budget by transferring $117,279 from Certified Excess and Deficiency Funds to the Asbestos Remediation Budget Line Item Account. Do I need to read the account number, Gary? It's a long one.
No, you don't have to read it.
This budget amendment does not increase the assessments to either Spencer or Eastbrookfield, but must be presented to each community for consideration in accordance with 603 CMR 4105. The budget amendment will become effective if neither town holds a town meeting within 45 days to disapprove the amendment. This amendment is further subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Messia?
How much will that leave in the excess and deficiency account?
Zero. So, it leaves zero for the current year. And as I said earlier, so we had a shortfall in net school spending last year. That amount had to be reserved on our balance sheet. And so that amount, at the end of the current year, will be closed out and will become E and D. So that amount's $519,000. So we know we'll end up with $519,000 as a minimum in E and D next year. And that was one of the reasons the state has allowed us to go ahead and spend the E and D this year. Otherwise, they would recommend that we keep at least $500,000 there.
Okay, that sounds better.
Are there any other questions? My only question was going to be pertaining to all the transfers we're making tonight, and I do see that you do have that last sentence about pending the approval of the Commissioner. It's my understanding that due to the legislation that we had, that all transfers have to be approved by the Commissioner of Education. Is that still the case? And if so, is that being done for all these transfers?
Yes, the, these, the transfers that we haven't gone over yet, and the one that was just, the motion was just made for, they have both been submitted to the Fiscal Overseer. It just takes Department of Ed a few weeks to get back. And the crucial time, timeframe for that, the transfer that was just, the motion was just made, is the 45 days. If we go past next Tuesday, then the, both communities don't have a 45-day window to reject that transfer. So we had to do it before next Tuesday. So if we don't do it tonight, and we don't meet, then we lose that opportunity to add the money to that project, and we probably won't be able to do it.
Okay, and when we do, when you do get the acceptance by the Commissioner, could we all have a copy of that?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, the next item of business is to discuss school committee meeting dates for May and June.
Excuse me, do we still have to approve the rest of the transfers?
Do you want me to go through those, or do you have particular, I mean, I would love to read them all.
Oh, no, we just, don't we need to make a motion to approve them? We did, we only approved the asbestos transfer, we didn't approve the entire-
Yeah, we got to approve the others as well, but I can, I can go through and explain what each one is, rather than read them all, if you'd like.
That's fine.
So the first page is basically just cleaning up some of the line items in the budget for various things this year. It's been a difficult year because of closing Lake Street, teachers moving, so following, the money following the positions was, was a little sketchy at times. But so as we get to the end of the year, the first transfer is to just move the money from one budget account to the other to cover the salaries of the teachers that moved. So that, the total amount of that transfer is $62,869.92. The second transfer, as you know, we closed Lake Street School, and so the funds, there were some shortfalls in the line items because we had utility bills that continued to come in, so we let those line items run over, knowing that sooner or later those utility bills would stop, the towns taking that over. So these were the amounts that were left to pay after we closed the school and the town took ownership of the building. The third transfer for 8,000, and that transfer for Lake Street School is a total of $11,2166. The third transfer is to, to, we had to pay, the district had a physician, a district physician, that I didn't know about, that the Superintendent didn't know about when we got here, and we got a call from someone representing him saying, you know, we haven't been paid. So it was, this was, it wasn't litigation, but he did retain an attorney, and so this is the amount that was owed him because of the contract he had that no one seemed to have a copy of or we couldn't find. So this was, we had to pay that based on advice of legal counsel, so that's what that $8,000 transfer is for. The transfer after that is the, the high school substitute teacher count is, is over budget and continues to, to be used. So right now, we need $83,393.30 to cover the shortfall in that account, and I would anticipate we'd need more money in that come, come the end of school. The next transfer for $1,895 is just to cover some additional expenses in the Special Education Contracted Services account. The transfer below that for $7,190.46 is to cover additional costs in the Technology Coordinator Salary Account, and that's actually not just one person, it's four people that work in that line item. And because of some of the work that was, that was done over the year on the, on the new website, it took additional time for Mr. McNee, and we had transferred money out of that account earlier thinking we wouldn't need it, and now we need to put it back because he had to do additional work. The transfer at the bottom of that page for $17,850 represents, we're hiring a, a special education psychologist, and currently the money to pay that person is in a salary line item, and the Pupil Services Director is going to hire someone and pay them as a contractor. So we're moving the money from salary, salaries to contracted services. Page two, the big transfer at the top of that page, $130,000 represents a shortfall in the Special Education Collaborative Tuition Account. We had additional kids move in during the year, and we estimate at this point that that's the amount of money we're going to need to finish the school year. So you can see all the accounts we're transferring from, and $130,000 is being put into the Special Education Tuition Collaborative Line Item to cover those tuitions. The transfer below that, we, we created the position of Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and we had originally intended to pay that salary out of school choice, but because we have to meet net school spending requirements, we decided to pay for that position out of the budget. So in order to do that, at the April meeting, we hadn't hired that person yet, we didn't know what the salary was going to be. So the $17,564.30 represents the balance of his salary till the end of June. The transfer after that, again, we just added $117,000 to the asbestos remediation project at the high school. In addition to that, we're going to take $49,000 from the District Security Upgrade Account and move it into the asbestos remediation budget so that we can meet the requirements of the, of the bids and get that project taken care of. And the last transfer is just to, we had put money aside for technology and, and some door replacements at the high school. The bids for the door replacement came in less than what we thought, so we're taking $23,000 from that account, we're taking $20,000 from the legal account, and we're moving it into the District Computer Hardware Account to make some modifications to the, for some of the quotes that we got for equipment that came in there. So those are the transfers.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Ms. Messia.
Just refresh my memory, Gary. When we hired the Curriculum Director, we were paying for that out of school choice money?
We were, but we moved that to the budget as well, so it'll count towards net school spending.
Okay, so now is, now that she's acting as Principal of the high school, is that coming out of the line item for the high school principal salary? Is that how she's being-
Yeah, she gets, she gets two hours a day, I believe, out of the principal's salary account, and the rest of it's charged to the Curriculum Coord, not Curriculum Coeur, but whatever her title is.
Academic Affairs?
Academic Affairs, right.
So at the end of the year, there'd be some surplus money for that high school position, the principal?
Well, some of that, some of that's being transferred out tonight in these transfers. If you look, see the-
Okay. No, I saw that, I was just making sure I was understanding the, how it was working. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Just one more.
Okay.
Do we have a lot of special ed students who are having out-of-district placements? Is that the need for the $130,000? Is that, or is it just kids that have moved into the district that now need out-of-district placements? Maybe Ms. Chiota could answer.
Ms. Chiota?
We had several students that have moved into the districts that require a transfer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm good.
Everybody else up? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Okay, now we will be talking about school committee meeting dates for May and June.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I know it, this is the time to talk about it. We've, we've met on Tuesday for the last couple of years, but I have a really large conflict now that I've had for the last year, and this would be the time to just ask if, and I know there's seven of you, and I don't expect us to move it if it's not easy for everybody, but I can literally do every day but Tuesday. So is anyone else willing to switch our day that we meet? Would that be acceptable to anybody? Is it not possible at all?
Tuesday works for me, I have it blocked off.
I have to agree with that, too, Tuesdays. I've worked my schedule around to make sure I'm here every Tuesday.
Tuesday's good for me.
Okay, Mr. Ethier?
Yeah, I, I have a lot on the other, Tuesday's the easiest day for me.
It would appear that the majority of people want to keep it on Tuesday, I'm afraid. Okay, so, is there any recommendation for dates that we wanted to meet next? Dr. Crowe?
The 24th was already on the school committee meeting calendar.
But then it had been canceled, correct? It was my understanding that it had been-
That would be the next available date, and then it's typically, there's the first and the third Tuesday in the month.
This is probably also the time to discuss the possibility. I don't know how the majority of the committee feels. I would like to see us go back to having subcommittees. This past year, we've been doing the regular meeting, and then the second meeting was a workshop meeting. I personally preferred the subcommittees. Could I hear any opinions on that, Ms. Messia?
When we established the workshop meetings, they were originally intended to operate, to handle subcommittee business.
Right.
It didn't always happen that way. My suggestion would be to continue with the workshop meetings, but maybe split into subcommittees at the workshop meetings.
I'm not sure I understand that. So in other words, you'd have a workshop meeting.
And then, it would just be like the subcommittees could meet that night.
Oh, okay.
Night of the workshop meeting.
So in other words, on those workshop meetings, it would not be the whole committee, it would just be people addressing a certain-
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Except for that, we're going to, there's, some of us are going to have to be on more than one subcommittee, so that will make that really difficult. I'm already on a subcommittee, I'm on the Technology Committee, so I don't know what, I don't know that we could really functionally do that. We'd need to kind of let those subcommittees make their meetings and have Missy post them on the website, I think.
I agree with Angela on that.
Okay. Wendy, do you have any concerns or comments?
I don't. You know, Tuesdays are the most convenient for me, even for subcommittee meetings, so as long as they're on Tuesdays, that's, that's fine with me, yeah.
Does anybody else have any opinion on this?
I, I personally think the subcommittees are a great idea, so we can review and go over somebody's policies especially. I think they got a lot of gray areas and they need to be gone over.
Well, to be honest with you, I think that is a subcommittee that we need to form, Ms., excuse me, as soon as possible. I think that is a big concern with a lot of us, is that, I think we're going to stop a lot of problems, a lot, probably a lot of grievances. If we can get these policies, I've said that through my campaign, I'm sure many of you heard me say that often, we have too many policies that aren't clear, they're not, you know, precise. That's when you run into problems. So with that being said, I would definitely like, even if possible tonight, if anybody would like to volunteer to be on a policy subcommittee, and then maybe at the next meeting, we can come up with a list of all the subcommittees that will be needed, and, you know, I can work with the Superintendent to prepare that, and we can bring it back and see who would like to serve on what committee. But since this policy subcommittee seems to be so important, are there any members who would like to serve on that?
I would serve on it.
I would definitely like to serve on it as well.
Mr. St. Peter?
I will also, Mrs. Barthium?
Did I hear someone else?
Yes.
Jason and Heather.
And as the Chair, I would like to be a part of that as well. I'm very familiar with the policy booklet, and I would like to be a part of that. So maybe at the end of the meeting, we can see what a mutually good time would be to sit down and start that process.
Madam Chair, I just had one more comment on the scheduling. So it sounds like we're going to go back to the first Tuesday of the month being, I mean, after May, we'll, we'll do the 24th in May for our regular meeting, and then we'll do the first Tuesday of the month, it sounds like, for our regular meetings. I had another comment as far as, prior to this past year, we had, I believe it was the June meeting and the December meeting were usually held in Eastbrookfield. I'd like to get the Board's feeling on returning to that.
The Superintendent and I were talking about that before the meeting started, and I told her that, and I thought that was a very good gesture. I think we need to start doing everything we can to make sure that Spencer and Eastbrookfield are represented fairly. I definitely want to see that, you know, going back to that, it used to be December, as was said, and June. I know they always look forward to us going there, and it was always, you know, really a nice evening. They always had a special holiday dessert for us in December, which we've missed. So would anybody like to make a motion to have the December and June meetings in Eastbrookfield?
So moved. Either one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ava?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's a vote. And now I guess the next thing would be to set the, should we just say that we are going to have the regular meetings on the second Tuesday of the month? And then after we get our policy subcommittees squared away, we can set those dates. Yes?
Just through you to Ms. Napton, is there a certain Tuesday of the month that would work better for you?
No, so it's, but it will, it will help me a lot to have it be once a month, because my, right now, the Technology Committee work is during the day, so that actually isn't a conflict for me, even though it's on Tuesdays as well.
And maybe Angela, when we do the subcommittees that you're on, we can try to have them on another night.
Earlier, earlier, just earlier meetings are easier for me.
Okay.
But that's great. I'm excited.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anything else, Dr. Crowe, that we need to set for meetings tonight?
Are we on Tuesday, the 14th?
Well, I think the vote that we just took was to have all the meetings, right, the second Tuesday of the month. So that would be the, we'll have one on May 24th, and then the next one would be on June 14th.
In Eastbrookfield.
Yes, that's correct. The one in, in June will be in Eastbrookfield. And would you please notify, I don't know if Mr. Tomlin is here tonight? Would you please make sure that Mr. Tomlin is aware of that for-
He has preschool open house tonight, or he-
Oh, okay. All right, is there any other business before the-
Yes, I'd like to talk about something real quick.
Okay, she, I'm on it.
I received an email from the Superintendent about meeting individually to talk about the state of the district. I don't believe that that's an individual topic. I believe the whole school committee should be involved in that. We have to work together as a team. We just can't be behind closed doors. That's when you have a lack of transparency and a lack of communication. I want to hear everybody's ideas.[1770.10] I want to hear everybody's ideas. We all, I think, can bring some good ideas out. And I think that should be brought to a meeting, not, not as individuals. So I didn't know if we can move that to even the 24th of May for the next meeting. Put that on.
Move that topic to May 24th?
Yeah.
Dr. Crowe, did you have a response to that?
I did. I want to make sure that you understand the purpose of that email. The email was sent out because I always extend an invitation. I know I had met with you previous during your campaign. But I always give new members an opportunity as well as the veteran members an opportunity to come in and sit down and talk with me. And she has some thoughts.
I have to say that I do agree with Mr. Monat. And I hate to say this, but I think due to the climate of the school district right now, you're going to find that this committee is going to be transparent. And in my opinion, the days of behind closed doors, one-on-one meetings, unless the committee member calls and requests that, I just don't feel that's the way we should be operating right now. I feel that anything that is... (applause). Thank you. I feel that anything that is said to one of us should be said to all of us. And as the chair, there are going to be times that I will have to have one-on-one meetings. I can assure you, all of the members, that I will take notes at those meetings and I will share them with all the members. I don't want to hear any more of anyone who says, "I didn't know about that." We have got to move forward. And this is the only way that that's going to be done. So I understand, Dr. Crowe, your purpose in that meeting. I truly do. But I just think due to the climate, this is the way we have to operate this year.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
I just want to extend the invitation.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other items that you'd like to discuss? Heather?
I just have something I'd like to say.
Okay.
A little speech I have. I'd like to begin by thanking both Mr. Hayes and Mr. Cludier for the time that they served on the Spencer Eastbrookfield School Committee. Whether we agree or disagree on matters that come before the school committee, it is important to recognize that members are volunteers who dedicate their time. And all members should be acknowledged in some capacity. To my fellow board members, a new day has dawned for the Spencer Eastbrookfield Regional School District. There is positive energy in the air, and it is my hope that it perpetuates long into the future. As a member of this board, I have tried my best to treat my fellow board members with dignity and respect. I will continue to hold true to my character. I will not spread false rumors, demean, or chastise my fellow board members. I will never make you feel as if your opinion doesn't matter. Every member of this board has a right to their opinion and should never feel intimidated to speak their mind. It will always be my intention to hold my fellow board members in the highest regard and listen attentively even when there is disagreement. Effective and transparent communication among members is essential for the betterment of the district. I would like to warmly welcome the new members to the board. Both new members have stated that they are ready and willing to work collaboratively with both communities, and for this, I am grateful. Jason Manette brings enthusiasm and a fresh set of eyes to the district. He has coached a proudie and is very involved within the community. Martha Barthium brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the board. Serving as secretary to the superintendent for over 30 years, she is well aware of Robert's rules in school district policy. She is also well informed of the history of the Spencer Eastbrookfield School District. For all of these reasons, I feel she will serve well as school committee chairperson. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much. And I was going to say the same thing. I think anyone who serves this district in any capacity, and I agree, I think that Mr. Cludier and Mr. Hayes, whether we all agreed with decisions, they put much time, much effort into their three years here. And it is going to be the feeling of this board, I hope, that anyone who serves in this district, whether it be in a teaching position, an administrative position, any